All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the, hang on one second, Thursday, July 17th, 2025, 6:00 PM edition of the Auburn Zoning Board of Appeals. My name is Robert Tatro. I'm the chair. I'm calling the meeting to order. So allow me to read my script. I'll get through all my formalities and we'll get the meeting underway. Good evening, everyone. I call this meeting to order at 6:00 PM on July 17th, 2025. I'd like to welcome everyone to today's meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals, and thank you all for attending. Please note that the meeting is being recorded by Auburn Cable Television. Is there anyone recording the meeting here this evening? Hearing none, seeing none? Before we proceed, let me remind everyone to ensure that the meeting runs smoothly, efficiently, and respectfully, that only one person may speak at a time, and each speaker must be recognized by the chair before proceeding. We will also adhere to the established agenda. In the interest of time, we will limit each speaker's comments to two minutes. Please be concise and avoid repetitive points already made by others. If a point has been covered, we kindly ask that refrain from repeating it to ensure that we allow everyone's chance to contribute. Alrighty, so the first order of business we have is to reorganize. We are up for that again. So do I have a motion to open the meeting to begin with? Let's do that.
Mr. Chairman, motion to open the meeting?
Do I have a second? All in favor? Okay, so the first item on the agenda this evening is our annual reorganization. Do I have a motion to open nominations for reorganization?
Mr. Chairman, motion to open nominations for reorganization.
Excellent, I just want to make sure I'm doing this correctly. So the first one is for chair. Do I have a motion for chair?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to nominate Robert Tatro, said self, for a chairman. I think that our present chairman's done an excellent job of keeping us straight, running this business, and so I would make that motion.
Thank you. Do I have any other motions for chair?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Me, no, I'm kidding. Thank you very much. I genuinely appreciate you allowing me to be your referee for another year, so thank you. I'm humbled. So do I have a motion for vice chair?
Sure, I'll make a motion to nominate Michael Marin as vice chair. Just for the record, currently already sits as vice chair.
Do I have any comments or seconds?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, seeing none. Thank you very much for your service too as well, sir. I appreciate your ability to get to the bottom of things as you do, so.
Yes.
Or co-referee, if you will.
Co-referee, great. No, I'm in very good company. I'm humbled by it. Thank you very much.
And the last thing I get to finally mention about this is that we have Ms. Bush as a full voting member now. So thank you very much for sticking out for probably the longest internship in the history of any board in town. And we're looking forward to it. I think at one point in my career, I actually taught gang classes, and you could probably join three or four different criminal organizations quicker than you could have gotten on the zoning board as a full voting member, so well done. But thank you. All right, so do I have a motion to close the reorganization process? I think is that the best way to say it?
Mr. Chairman, motion to close the reorganization process.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, seeing none? Excellent, thank you so much. I greatly appreciate that. Okay, so we have the 6:00 PM applicant Regency RE Investments LLC requesting a special permit under section 3.2.5.14 of the Auburn zoning bylaw for a car wash facility at 861, 871, 879, and 873 Southbridge Street, and 16 Hill Street, Auburn, Mass., map 65, parcels 7, 8, 9, 10, and 11. And for all of you following along at home, we're talking about the Ronnie's parcel on Route 20. Okay, so do I have a motion to open the hearing?
Mr. Chairman, motion to open the hearing.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Is the applicant present? Good evening, gentlemen. If you'd like to approach the lectern, introduce yourself. Give us an overview of what you'd like to accomplish, please.
Evening. It's nice to see you. Once you're an officer, you gotta stay. My name is Mark Johnson from Johnson and Bornstein. I represent RE, Regency RE Investment LLC. With me is Jay Patel, who's a principal. I'd like to just have Jay just introduce himself and tell you a little about his company and what he's looking to do.
Sure, thank you. Yep, so I'm Jay Patel, local to Massachusetts. I operate retail and automotive uses throughout the state, and we're excited to bring a modern, new, shiny car wash to Auburn, and just excited to get this process started.
Okay, are there any abutters here? I obviously see only town staff in the audience tonight, but I just make sure for the record, do we have any abutters present? Hearing none, seeing none? I'm gonna go ahead and turn it right over to Vice Chairman Marin. Do you, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for the reference point of old Ronnie's. Greatly appreciated. I think that hones us indirectly. Given that this business will be in our aquifer zone, zone 2 aquifer, so just a couple of questions on how your approach for water remediation, how the runoff and chemicals are gonna be treated specifically?
We have our site engineer watching on video, and he's gonna respond to certain questions.
I'm sorry, I can't hear.
Can you speed up the microphone, please?
We have the engineer who's out of state watching.
He's on a video?
He's on video, and this question like that, we're gonna put to him, and he'll give us a response to convey.
As long as we can hear him, he can adequately explain what's going on, that's fine.
Chris, you should be good to go.
There's a slight delay.
Ah, okay, we can't hear you. I can hear clearly, anyone else?
I can hear.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so the question one more time is how we're gonna treat the chemicals in the aquifer zone?
Yeah, I mean, it's a compound question, if you will, and so essentially.
Yeah, so there's reclaim system.
How it's gonna be treated, and also I'd like you to address the recharge. If it's a full recharge and you're reclaiming a certain percentage or all of it, and if the water's gonna be recycled?
Yeah, okay, you can go ahead, Chris. Are you speaking, Chris?
I'm listening.
Yeah, so the question is, you know, just the site lies in an aquifer zone, sorry, and the question is just how are we gonna address kind of the chemical runoff, and what percentage of the water is gonna be reclaimed?
So there, yes, so there's a three-tank reclaim system, 2,000 gallons per. Traditionally, reclaim is about 65%. That's a baffle system, and it goes from one to the other. The reclaimed water is used throughout the process other than the freshwater rinse-down at the end.
And I guess just the stormwater runoff? I guess we could address that piece a little bit?
I'll let Kelly jump in on the stormwater.
Yeah, stormwater is gonna be done with underground detention. So we provided some preliminary engineering that we've worked through so far, but then we'll be diving into more engineering after our approval.
And I'm assuming, I think you've already been to the planning board, is this correct? So there was some other, you know, just so the board understands, they went to the planning board first, there were some questions regarding it, and the town thought in the best interest to come before the board and just go through the special permit process as well. So that's why they were approved already at the planning board level, just so you're aware. So I think you have pretty much a standard recharge system. Was this done by, reviewed by Graves Engineering already?
No, this was just for the special permit, but we'll have a full engineering review with the town. We've already gone through preliminary.
This was at, at the point?
Right, this is, yep, we'll apply for the site plan, and then the engineering review as well with their full stormwater plans and everything that the town requires.
Okay, so do you wanna, does anybody else wanna ask questions for the recharge system?
Not for the recharge system. I was gonna move on to signage, but I can reserve and let the other board members jump in.
Just in case, yep. Anybody interested in speaking on, like, the recharge or the reclamation system of the car wash itself?
You know, my concern is that we have the water to support the facility. Does the town have enough water to support the facility?
Yeah, so that's been addressed by the water department, and they have.
We have submitted a letter. We have submitted a letter with the application from the Auburn Water District. It's with the application based upon the work that's being done, which they anticipated when the letter was written sometime in July, there would be sufficient water. And that letter is with the application.
We have some wells off with all those apartments up across the road. I know there was an issue with water, so I just wanted to make sure that we have sufficient water.
Yeah, they've indicated the board approved supplying water to the proposed car wash continued upon the completion of the Worcester interconnection, and the interconnection project has been awarded and is scheduled to begin in July. I'm not sure what the status of it is, but we certainly understand that that's gonna have to be completed for us to have the water.
That was from the Auburn Water Department?
That's correct.
Do we have a copy?
Yep, it's the last in each of the, yep, keep going. So it essentially says that as long as the project goes through and that we get that connection, that there will be enough water, according to their.
South Street is.
Yep, yeah, the Water District has approved, but contingent on the completion of that water from Worcester.
So there is a contingency for that, based on that hook?
I mean, according to them, yes. I would assume that's something we would condition with if we approved.
I was thinking exactly, our condition should include that.
Okay, and just for the record, could I just, for the town side, is there any indication that water line from Worcester is gonna be interrupted? Is there gonna be any issues with it that we're aware of? I know, I'm asking Gary, the town side here. Like, the water line they're talking about.
Well, the water line talking about, I believe, is down because of arsenic, if I'm not mistaken, if I read it correctly.
I'm referring to this out here from the water district.
The treatment facility, actually, the application is in the system as we speak, going through the queue. And they're looking to get started, and so they say, once that's completed, approved, and for use, that's when that will come back online. The water's there, you just can't use it.
Right, no, what I was asking was, though, it's continued upon receiving a water line from Worcester.
The interconnection with Worcester.
Yeah, the intersection, that is all part of that, right.
Right, so that's what I mean, is there any indication that's interrupted at all?
And then they're not gonna sign off on this, and so the water's there.
Right, okay. But we don't have any interruption on that project so far that would indicate any issues with this one, is what I'm asking. Right, okay, so that's good to know. So according to the town, there's no interruption with that project? It's not, it's still on schedule to move forward?
Okay, I'm good.
Okay, Ms. Bush?
I had that same question, so I don't have anything at this point.
Mr. Garabedian, why are you here?
Yeah, I have a quick question. Do you guys own the parcels? Are you guys gonna be renting it out? I just noticed that on the plans you provided, it has other owners besides your business.
Yeah, we purchased this parcel, all five parcels.
So I just, I do have a couple of questions, just first. Assuming that you get the approvals that you need from us, what is the timeline on, like, start to finish? What is it gonna, how long is it gonna take to put this up?
Just my understanding, you know, the process is probably a six-month build. The site work might take a little bit longer. So we're aiming at probably 12 to 15 months to completion after the permit is rented, as long as the site plan review and everything goes relatively smoothly.
Okay, and it seems like, I mean, because we have plans in front of us and not everybody does, if they're watching, you're completely removing everything that's there, right? You're just starting from scratch?
Yes, that's correct. There's a bunch of old buildings on the site, kind of scattered, so everything will be knocked down.
Okay, and the entrance to the car wash, according to the second plan, looks like it's, if I had to guesstimate for the folks at home, like, where the barber shop, right, I guess? The one that's like, there's like a little barber shop that's closest to the street? That's where you're gonna enter?
It's a little bit probably closer to the first parcel, the parcel abutting us with the buses.
Okay, okay.
So it's pretty much not as close as it could be, but it's kind of as farther away from the intersection as we could, because we didn't want to make that dangerous and having people turn in, you know, right where they're.
Yep, okay, so on the first parcel, okay.
Yes.
And then what about, it looks like you're keeping the access off that's directly on Hill Street?
That's correct.
Also an in and an out, according to the plan? It looks like that's what it looks like.
Yeah, I believe so, yes.
In, out, okay.
That's the existing entrance that's there.
Yeah, okay.
And you know what's interesting? I'm glad you pointed that out, but as I was speaking to Mr. Marin earlier, there happens to be one on Park Avenue Worcester that was just rebuilt. It's a scrubber dub, and I have that service. It's pretty much the same layout as what they did there with this two, you know, entryway on both sides going in one direction, and then, you know, a controlled flow on the other side, because they'll put the vacuums where they do or whatever, right? So it allows some people to just go in there to use the vacuum, not necessarily the car wash or vice versa.
Will the entrance and exit exclusively be on Hill?
No, it looks like it's right here.
On Southbridge, on 20.
On 20.
So it'll probably end this way, right?
You can only go right, well.
And you can go out, okay, so it's gonna, it's gonna be in here, but that's far enough away, and they're all gonna have to, but the exit is all through Hill Street, correct? Unless they're coming in to use vacuums.
Well, it looks like you could still get out this way, right?
If you want, yeah, if people wanted to backtrack that way, they could still go. I think it, it looks to me, the way the design is laid out, it would favor using Hill Street mostly.
Agreed, but I would, I would suggest that there's still, even if they were to backtrack and go out towards 20, there's enough room in that lot for them to do that safely.
Yeah, and there's plenty of view on both sides too, right?
I agree, I don't see it problematic.
Okay.
And they're gonna need site plan approval.
Correct.
From.
Well, they already have it, they went to planning already, so.
But they did, no, you did, you know, I think he said they didn't, right? You don't have site plan approval from planning.
No, we do not, we still have to go to planning.
Oh, okay, gotcha, thank you.
Yeah, this I don't love, but that's not my job, so I'll stay out of that.
Three car width, right there, that's pretty wide.
Yeah, but just like people going in and coming in and out, but again, that's not really for us to decide, so that's off the site plan, okay. Yeah, I don't, other than my emotional connection to the old Ronnie's, I don't have any other questions.
So I just have a few, actually, if I could, please. Going back to the reclamation system that's in the car wash itself. So first of all, how wide will the car wash track be? Will it fit a full-size pickup truck? Will it fit an F-250, F-350?
Yeah, it'll be a full-size, I don't want to accommodate as many vehicles.
Because I drive a Raptor, and it's wider than everybody else's truck, so it doesn't always fit.
They'll take your car, for sure.
All right, I'm just making sure, that's my own selfish question. But I just wanna make sure also, because you're gonna have people, you know, we do have a lot of workmen in town, they have work vans with, you know, different things on top, so yeah, I'd like to be able to make sure it serves as much of the community as it can. The other question is, again, going back to the recharge stuff, you said about 65% of your water is reclaimed, 45% lost. So as you're going through the winter, and you're gonna have all the sand, sludge, et cetera, that's gonna eventually accumulate, how is that managed? Is that cleaned through traps by humans and then dumped out, or how does that work?
Yep, there with me one second.
Good question.
How do we clean out the sand and the dirt in the?
There's an oil-water separator.
So yeah, whether it be something that flashes off on the floor.
Reclaim tanks, there's also radiant heat to keep your carryoff so that the roads don't become slick.
And how is the oil-water separator cleaned out?
It'll be done by, just like we'll clean out about every quarter, or every quarter will be a pump truck that comes in, takes the sludge out, and then that'll be handled, however, the municipality and the jurisdiction.
So it's taken off, right, just processed?
Right.
Right, okay, that's good to know, with a vacuum type of truck. And would you say that's a 2,000-gallon tank roughly, would you say, for that?
2,000 gallons to Chris?
Yeah, three 2,000 gallons, and Kelly, I believe the oil-water separator is 1,500. We have, that's typical, but because we haven't fully designed it, but that would be the typical.
And so the detergents, primarily silicone? Well, not just the detergents, those are, we know of those, a different type of base, but the finishing products in there, are they all silicone-based?
Are the finishing products silicone-based?
No, but we have all the MSDS, no phosphates, all pretty much can go down the drain, but we have all MSDS sheets for you guys when we get into, get into that.
Right, so that was just my question too, is when you get to the point where you have a 65 slash 45, you know, is the, we'll just say, is the liquid with the detergents and soaps or whatever they are in there, are they treated at all before they're released into the system? Into the public system?
Yeah, yeah, they're, they're, it's essentially like a, sorry, a leach, a leach, well, not a leach field, sorry, it's like a septic tank where it's tiered, it's aerated while it's in there, so no bacteria is growing, and then as that water's being reused, it's, it's going into the rest of the car wash.
Right, gotcha, okay, so that's fine, I understand all that stuff. But my question was, none of these soaps, none of these detergents or waxings or finishers adjust the pH of the water at all? So there's no, you're not putting any type of pH adjustments before it gets discharged into the common system, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, that's just what I wanted to find out first. I wasn't sure if it did. Some systems I've seen in the past do, some don't, that's all I wanted to know. There was another. Right, and the salt, right, there was another question. So eventually, we're gonna have a salt accumulation. That just kind of, that just get neutralized on its own kind of thing? Is it, you know, goes with the waste?
Say that again?
Basically, the road chemicals.
Yeah, the road chemicals and the salt, I guess, what's the process with that?
Has that ever become an issue with the system? Is it absorbed by the system without effort, or?
No, we haven't had any, any issues with any of the chemicals. I mean, the carryoff, it's essentially a self-contained unit. The, any of the carryoff, it's about seven gallons of clean RO, reverse osmosis water that's gonna come out. Again, we're gonna do radiant heat on the entry and exit, so there won't be any black ice, and then as they go through the vacuums, any of, any of that's gonna essentially be contained into the site.
Sure, yeah.
So tire shine, et cetera.
Okay, I mean, honestly, those are the concerns that I had, and I, just working in the biotech industry, I understand what they have to do to their water before it gets discharged, so I just wanna go over that, so they have everything in place, at least that I could hear and see, so.
And just for the record, Chris Warren was the person who responded to the questions, and then Kelly Schreitman also responded as well to some of the questions, just so the record can reflect that.
Right, so the one other question I did have, you had mentioned earlier that the rinse, the final rinse is separate. So the final rinse is a freshwater rinse, and it just starts as freshwater, it goes into the drain as freshwater, that's it, right? And that's where most of your loss really probably is, then?
Yeah, that's where the loss would be, and it would be that 35%, because if the 65 would be reclaimed.
Exactly, so a majority of the loss is the freshwater rinse at the end, realistically. Okay, thank you.
Yep, that's correct.
Anyone else?
I do, just one question, excuse my ignorance, but the lane that it has like three cars across, is that like a pay station? Okay, sorry, I'm used to like.
Yes, yes, that's, that's the pay station, so if you have the pass registered, then you can just go right through, or you can pay at the register there.
And it's all automated?
There'll be someone out there to help you, but yeah, one person, and so they can kind of handle the three machines.
Okay, perfect.
And you just have somebody, basically, the one, the new one over in Worcester that I use, they have somebody just guiding them into the chute, so to speak? Tell them to put it in neutral, and then they have somebody in the office if they have any questions?
Yeah, and we'll have someone to rinse the cars first before they come in, so that person who's guiding can also rinse.
Sure, okay, perfect. Anyone else, any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, recognizing they're going to site planning, probably too soon to talk about signage and lighting, but have you thought about hours of operation?
Yeah, it says it, 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, seven days a week with three staff members. It's, I can't find it now, but.
Is it in the brief?
It is.
Page one.
Page, oh yeah, second page of this. 7:00 A to 8:00 P, seven days a week. And I'm sure if needed, they'll be back for signage if, once they get to that, once they get to that point, yeah.
And it could very well be that they are within the boundaries of that.
They could, yep, they may.
You may not necessarily have to have any large or small.
Very true, unless they want to illuminate or something, but yeah, it's predetermined for now.
Most of these places come through, I think you could probably tell, like, this is, a company is coming in and building this model for you, probably, right? Is that how that works? Like, so in other words, you're gonna contract with a national company? They're gonna come in, they're gonna build this out for you, and you're gonna take control of it when it's done, right?
It will be involved in the process, but yes, they'll, yeah, they'll advise it.
Yeah, so they're kind of like a standardized sets of plans that they use, and they go around and do their things with it, and I think some, that's like with the dealerships, they tend to have their standard signs.
Yeah, it's nice.
I don't have any other questions, anyone else?
Do you have one?
I was just gonna ask about the sign for the board, but we brought that up, so.
Right, okay. Anyone else, anything else? I just wanna make sure, sorry, gentlemen, walk in, do you have any abutters? Do they like to speak on this?
It's from my office.
Okay, I just wanna make sure, that's okay. Hearing none, seeing none, thank you. We have a motion to close the public portion of the hearing.
Mr. Chairman, motion to close the public portion?
Do I have a second? All in favor? Aye, any opposed? No, no. Any comments or questions from the board?
No, I mean, I think, I think all areas have been covered, recognizing what they're trying to accomplish, and the fact that it's gonna be a lot of standard plug-and-play from an organization that does this every day. I do think if we move forward with a, with a positive vote, that we should contingent, a condition based on the availability, the connection for the water supply. But, and as you'd suggested, Mr. Chairman, and what the water department indicates is that that's on track for '26, so it shouldn't be a hiccup. But I do think we should continue, we should condition it, making sure that they have assurance of supply of the water.
Sounds good. Anyone else? No? Do I have a motion on the 6:00 PM applicant Regency RE Investments LLC requesting a special permit under section 32514 of the Auburn zoning bylaw for a car wash facility at 861, 871, 879, 873 Southbridge Street, and 16 Hill Street, Auburn, Mass., map 65, parcels 7, 8, 9, 10, and 11?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve as stated, with standard conditions with the addition of a condition that speaks directly to securing supply of water based on the water department's indication that completion in '26 and the Worcester interconnection needs to be made.
Do I have a second on that?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, seeing none? Congratulations, we thank you for doing business in town, good luck with the rest of the projects.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, we look forward to working with you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing your Raptor, for sure.
Okay, do I have a motion to close the 6:00 PM hearing?
Motion to close the hearing, Mr. Chairman.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None, hearing none, seeing none. Okay, so we have some decisions. Predominantly, we have, of course, let me get this out now, before I hear it, I, okay. This is the point where we're going to review and finalize the special permit, comprehensive special permit for the Chapter 40B project that we've been working on for the last year. So if you remember, at the end of the last hearing, the request was to have, from the vice chair, basically, specifically was, stronger language as it related to the legal issues surrounding the private road. So we did meet, we broke it down at one point, I think he sent you an email copy of that so you could read it, but they took it a step further,[1724.33] um, they took it a step further and they brought it back to the attorney again, requesting stronger language, and I think they did a fantastic job. Uh, I'm pretty confident that we won't get much better than this. I don't think we can send it back a third time, that, I don't think we can be any more firm without committing the town to possibility of getting itself involved, right? That's, and that's what we're trying to avoid here, all intent and purposes. So I'm gonna go ahead and read through it and then we can have it for discussion. So it's three to, three point two point forty-one of the, uh, the comprehensive permit and it is on page nine for anyone following along. The town has no authority over the private way. Any improvements, alterations, repairs, or similar work which is planned within the bounds of Perry Place, a private way, by the applicant or its agents must be performed in accordance with the developer's legal rights in recognition of the rights of all butters and/or as required by law. So then it goes on to say three point two point four one point one, the developer shall address in detail and in writing to the town, one, how the proposed project will impact the private rights of the butters on Perry Place, including addressing the issue of the potential overburdening of the easement. Two, how the developer will mitigate any identified impacts at the developer's own expense. And three, a detailed legal explanation of how the developer has the right to widen Perry Place a private way. Onto three point two point forty-one point two, the developer shall not perform any widening, resurfacing, development, alteration, maintenance, repair, or otherwise alter Perry Place in any manner without first verifying that such proposed work has been approved by the town and by all butters to Perry Place in a written agreement or has been allowed by order of a court or competent jurisdiction. So, if any one of our legal experts on the board would like to break that down or go over it, I'm confident that we can do that if anybody has any questions or concerns about that language.
So, so what I see is all the neighbors have to agree?
Correct.
One thing I would just want a discussion of, Mr. Chairman, is for four two, uh, forty-one, two.
Mm-hmm.
Says approval by the town and all the butters. I don't believe the town has any interest in this determination outside of its capacity as an abutter itself, so we might just wanna clarify that. Approved by the town in its role, capacity, whatever, as an abutter of Perry Place.
So I think we did discuss that. Gary, do you wanna speak on that, clarify what he's concerned with?
Well, it just starts right off at the top, that, you know, the town, you know, doesn't have any authority there, so it's, he's trying to say that we, we should alleviate the town by saying that they have to have some form of approval by us. We can kind of over, oversee it and overview it and review it, send it to the attorney for things, but I don't believe we actually have a vote to say, oh, no, that doesn't meet ours and we're not gonna let you because we don't have any interest in it.
But we do have a, at least I think one tax title along Perry Place, which further complicates it. We're in a butter.
There, there he goes, oh, there's always something.
There's a what further on that? I believe, I believe the town has a tax title to one of the properties off of Perry Place. Mr. Mayor just brought that up, so that means we're officially in a butter to Perry Place as well as just being the town generally.
Town side, do we wanna do, we note that? Cause that is correct, there is a, okay, thank you very much, just for the record, the town has acknowledged that they are aware of that. Okay, um.
So then the town has say. If they're, if they're in a butter, the town.
Right.
As it a butter.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, that, that would make sense.
Yeah, sure.
Don't know where that.
Okay, is there any other clarification that, in the paragraphs that I read that would concern anyone else? Okay. So is anybody, everybody in agreement with this type of language? Since we've already agreed to the, you know, we've already voted this in, I just wanna make sure this is your language that you agree with, you know, before you officially send it in.
Yep, uh, so, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Absolutely.
I think, so I went away from last meeting looking for the kind of language that's in three, two, four, one, two.
Mm-hmm.
Specifically. And although I, I appreciate why it starts the way it does, that, um, that, that, that town does not have,
The authority over the private way?
The authority, um, as said, um, you know, the, um, I would have been concerned if, if this went as far as because three, two, forty-one, one was essentially where we were left last time.
Correct.
Um, and so I think our focus tonight is at three, two, forty-one, two, that basically puts, I'll just put, put the framework around, it, it, it adds the rigor, um, that this needs to be either adjudicated correctly or there is an agreement by all the butters and the developer.
Correct.
One or the other. All right, so it certainly gives that option, uh, but it gives the option in such a way that either one has to be completely satisfied.
Correct.
Correct.
One other thing, sorry, uh,
Oh, keep going, this is what we have for.
Other thing I add with just, uh, three, two, forty-one, two, is we might want, wanna also clarify, uh, in a written agreement recorded in the registry of deeds as well, uh, just that way it's also a easement on all the properties. It's, it clarifies it to all the properties, runs with the properties.
He does put a finer point on it.
I'm actually putting note here for that right now. So we could have that for discussion, certainly, if that's where we're gonna go. Um, and we'll bring that up when we finish everything else, I suppose, but, um.
Would, if I may, Mr. Chairman, would such an agreement, um, have to be recorded?
I believe so, I just,
Yeah.
I like cross my Ts, dotting my Is, making sure.
Yeah, especially, especially because of the private way, it really is a road issue. And that's the registry of deeds right there, it's all, you know,
Very good.
Roads and lots.
Yep, then I, then I would agree with that addition.
Well, and from the developer's perspective, if by some miracle they get all the neighbors to agree, they certainly want that to be recorded, so if a house is sold, the next person can't say, well, I don't
They have that, they would have that in perpetuity for the right, for the rights therein, agree? Okay. Yep, then I, I would agree on that, I think that's a substantive change.
Um, any other questions, concerns? Now, the one thing I would point out that, um, Dr. Manad and I actually brought up in the meeting, I think it's fair to say, is that three, two, forty-one point two does say all of these things about the road, but it does not necessarily say they cannot begin the process of working at their site, right? Because the site is not restricted itself, it's the road. So I'm, I'm, that's my debate question for you all. I would believe that, in my opinion, means they could possibly start construction at the site.
Firstly, I wanted the road issue squared away before.
Right. Right, that, that's the intent, I just wanna make sure that's clear. And we can just say that on the record, doesn't need to be in there, but, I think really, I'm just making sure I understand.
Yeah, I would want that, uh, the road issue squared away before you start.
If the board would want that, I think in theory we could add after this, uh, so the developer shall not perform any widening, et cetera, of Perry Place without first verifying, uh, so between Perry Place and, or without, uh, between, sorry, with, between manor and without
Yep.
A comma, and I think you can put in, and no, uh, building permits shall be issued without first verifying.
So the one thing, though, it goes back to, and I'm gonna caution that, we talked about this in the meeting. So before we can agree to this, I would definitely run it by the attorney again, because going back to the one point here, the town has no authority over the private way. So that might be implying that we have authority by holding the permit up on the private way? Is that possible or no?
Not sure.
Okay, I'm just asking, I just think that that's an important.
No, you know what, I think that's a slippery slope, Mr. Chairman. I agree, I agree with you in principle, but, but I would suggest that un- until, I mean, the, the premise of this is until this is resolved, that, I think
Correct.
Mr. Cuskey is leaning into, um, is that they, they shouldn't go forward. So what we're not doing is, we're not making a determination ye- yes or no, but we're suggesting that we wouldn't issue
Right.
A building permit until this is resolved to, to the satisfaction of the language in this, in this section. So, so I would, so I, I, I think it applies, I, I, I think it adds. I think, I think we can help. And let me, let me just ask, I mean, can we hold a building permit, um, for a condition in, in such an agreement?
It, it, it really comes down to, do they have access to the property without it? You know, and if they, if they have no access to the property without it, if they cannot maintain and keep the betterments to get to their property, I don't see how they can, how they can
Okay, I just want to clarify that.
Say, say there's a bill, a building permit on it.
So, so I think it's, so I think it's an ad, sorry.
But I think they, I don't think anyone argues the fact that they have access. They absolutely, if they own that parcel, they have the same right as every other person on that street. They own to the center line, so they can drive, Mr. Vanacosta can go park his car there right now when he leaves here. He absolutely has access to the site. Our thing has always been, do they have the right to overburden that access by putting a development that's gonna have thousands of cars go back and forth at the disadvantage of the neighbors who also own to the center line? So, I don't know that we can, if he can fit a dump truck down there, I don't know that we can say we won't give him a building permit.
It might also be better to leave it up to the law of economics of
Right, they might not wanna start until they know that, I mean, if they start and then they are barred and they can't build this, I mean, then that's, that's up to them.
Without the road being correct.
And, and it was discussed at our meeting as well, that the water and sewer have to come down that road.
Don't want to start it.
And which would mean that betterments would have to be done on that road, it already said no betterments can be done on the road.
Right, but if he wants to
Water and sewer, okay, I'm on your side.
The sewer and water to sign off, it doesn't even check, even get to my box.
Yeah, I, I think both things are equally true, um, to, to your point, Ms. Roach, and that I think the, the economics can certainly play out if I'm the developer and I don't try to spend a lot of time with that hat on, but, um, but, but if I'm the developer, I'm economically looking at this and, and gauging the risk, right? Um, and so I think that's a primary factor, but to your point, he absolutely has access. Um, you know, to, to access his property. Um, but, but having said that, the issuance of a building permit, it's not the access, but it's the issuance of a building permit predicated on the fact that he can't move forward.
All the boxes have to be checked.
Right, oh, right.
Conservation, water, sewer, stormwater management.
Right.
Um, you know, uh, all the elevation, I mean, as far as the developer goes, he would have to spend a ton of money, which he has to, to get even ready to get into that box. This is preliminary, preliminary drawings, preliminary concept of what we're gonna do. Soon as he gets the full approval, all of a sudden, that's when the real digging and spending goes. And I don't think he would jump that without knowing that, that he'd be able to use it.
So, so I'll, I'll just say that the tedious conservative in me suggests that I, I like this with the language of building permit shall not be issued. However, I think based on the factors that are here, I think the risk is minimal to have it without it, so I could, I could be, I could be, but I, but I do like the conservative nature of it.
Ms. Bush, any thoughts on it?
Oh, I agree, I don't think we need the language in there because it's not gonna build on it if you can't, you know, put the, the improvements for the entire building.
Yeah.
I just wanna make sure, I, I agree with everyone, so as long as we're happy, I'm, I'm satisfied, I think this went pretty well. I don't think, um, I don't think we can do any more due diligence on this process than we already have. I think we've dotted every I, I think we've crossed every T, checked every comma. I think we're in pretty good shape and I think we've protected this town as best as we possibly could, given the process. So, that's my thought.
So, Mr. Chairman, are we going to suggest adding, um, that, um, that any said agreement, um, would need to be recorded?
I would just do the registry of deeds and that would be it, I think that's a good advisement, just make sure it's recorded, because again, that protects the, it protects both parties.
Very good, so we would, so we would make that addition?
I would put it, I would put the, yeah, I would put that one.
And it's gonna go right behind, placed in a written agreement,
Required.
Recorded at registry of deeds and then, or has been allowed by order of the court or competent jurisdiction.
Okay, and, and can I ask, Mr. Fallon, why do I have four copies of this? I have four copies of this document to be signed.
Here's the, um, here's the signing page.
I have full, four individual copies.
Yeah, cause I, I started.
But I have four individual copies of the same document requesting all of our signatures.
Mm-hmm.
Our
That's, that's the one that needs to be signed with you.
This is the original one? And I, I, yeah, I'm not, I was not.
These are, because this is the updated, this is yours, because they gave us a, a new updated copy when you came to the meeting today.
Okay, that, okay, but we're, but we're not signing these, we're signing a signature.
I see, yeah, this one.
Okay, because we started signing it.
I, yes, correct.
Just put up and suggest it.
I got you, I understood, I, I realized after I did that, correct.
This is the town's original, right here.
Oh, that's fine.
This is Garabedian.
Yeah, no, that's fine, I mean, for nostalgia, we can have our signatures, if you wish. I just, I just want, from a clerical perspective, I wanna make sure that Mr. Fallon has what he needs. Cause he knows where I live.
So I'm signing off on that one.
Yep.
Okay, um, with the promise that we're gonna make that addition to that last page based on recording?
Yep.
Okay, very good.
And are we adding the language about the town also being in a butter in there, or is that just, it's on the record now?
Well, that's why it says town and all the butters, we're technically in all the butter, but if they wanted to clarify it, I don't see why not.
If you're, if you're, and you're a butter, yes, you're involved.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. And this closes a very, very long chapter. This is like a Harry Potter book right here, I'll tell you. The mentors and everything.
And that's
Periodically, we're gonna have to ask Mr. Vanacosta to come back and, um, just say hello periodically.
I know, we're gonna miss you.
We've, um, we've enjoyed these Thursday evenings together.
Well, I think we'll be seeing Yeah, yeah. Yeah, um, I think we'll be seeing you probably shortly again anyway, right?
Yes.
So. Yeah, okay, so we'll see you when the time comes again. Come on up. Come on up, sure, you can.
I guess, so my only concern is obviously with the, all the butters have to sign off. Like, that's gonna be, that's, that's gonna be extremely difficult to reach.
Well, that's, if, if they give you an opportunity to do that, right? So if you can get everybody to sign off on it, then you don't have to take it anywhere, you don't have to go to court, you don't have to go, you know, it's agreed upon. I mean, I think there's only two or three left now, isn't there? Didn't one of them leave, I thought?
But that's also just the way it works as a private way where every butter has a right in it. So you, everyone who has rights in that property to sign off on it, you can't just have three quarters or ninety-nine point nine percent, because that point one percent still can stop you from exercising anything on that road.
Would somebody who's beyond me still have to?
That's probably talk to your attorney. I, I'd say anyone who has access to the road is who that is, because if they're on that road, they own that road and that's really the problem. Is their ownership interest of the road, is the easing of the road, the widening or not widening of the road, so.
Right. Okay.
Obviously, this is a very complicat- complicated process. I think the next one we have, hopefully will go a lot smoother for everyone involved. I think we're gonna, we're gonna be better prepared for the next one.
I just found out that's a private road too.
That's what?
Athens, Athens is a private road too, so.
Well, this might result in your problem.
That came, my attorney called me, he's like, just so you know, I'm like, no, that was Perry, he's like, no, it's Athens too, I'm like, awesome.
Ah, here we go.
That'll be fun.
We'll, we'll start crossing that bridge literally.
At least we, at least we know what it is now, you know? So.
All right.
All right, I appreciate it.
Know more about, uh, private roads. Everybody in the state don't know more about private roads after you've finished.
Okay, um, so we have the decisions to be made for the Philadelphia sign, excuse me, three sixty-two Southbridge Street, which is Chase Bank, and then Steve Moss for four twenty South. Um, those decisions have to be signed. We have the minutes for February third of twenty-five, which was the forty B presentation, and five twenty-two twenty-five. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes as stated and mentioned?
Mr. Chairman, excuse me.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from two, three, twenty-five, and five, twenty-two, twenty-five.
Do I have a second?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman, as stated.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, seeing none? Do we have anything for discussion? So I do know that we have a couple of, um, if anybody's interested, we do have a couple of other forty B projects coming up relatively quickly. Um, they are holding Um, they are holding public hearings at the town hall here. Um, if anybody's interested in attending just to hear what the, the residents have a concern. Um, and then we are also meeting again this coming Monday night. We have a forty B, it's sort of like an action committee. What they're trying to do is set up a checklist to make sure we do get notified of a forty B project. We're gonna have a, an action plan in place, so everybody gets notified in an appropriate amount of time. We have an ability to document everything that we need, uh, you know, when to get the, um, consultant involved. So we've been kind of planning and getting ourselves in line that we can be better prepared to absorb these next couple of projects coming down the road.
Yeah, it would be nice if they could finish up the one up on you know, for us and Ronnie's to get us up to our targets, not
Right.
It's just becoming
That one doesn't bring us to ten, that brings us to nine point eight percent.
Right, but I mean, so
This one's a stain for me.
Done. That, that, that's it. If they get, when he's across the finish line, the rest have to stop coming.
Right.
But if, but if they all get in the queue before you reach it, it's like they're in the queue and
Too many of them.
Yeah, that's, you know, that's the problem with these things.
Um, no, that, that's Mr. Cus-, Ms. Chairman, that's Mr. Cuskey.
Oh, that's right, you're right, correct. Thank you for curling that one on me. Thank you. Um, and then, so I don't have any unforeseen business. Does the town have anything they need to address?
Mr. Chairman, I, I
Please go ahead.
I didn't mean to interrupt you if anyone
You're not at all.
Um, I was, I was only gonna suggest, and I, I wanted to do it in between, but I haven't yet. But I wanted to go on the record. I, I liked, um, the board's agreement that, um, we put before the Board of Selectment, um, for, um, Mr., uh, Mr. Colo and his years of service on this board, uh, that we put before them perhaps a recognition, um, you know, perhaps a or, I, I know that it's been done before. When I, when I early joined the board years ago, um, I, I, I remember we did it, um, for a gentleman that was outgoing at that time.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and so, uh, I'd, I'd like your agreement, uh, to put before the Board of Selectment, that we do such a, such a thing for, for Mr. Cole for his years of service to the town directly.
I would agree with that, absolutely. Um, so do I have a motion that I can draft an email or a letter requesting, um, and I can forward it to all of you through the town? That way you can read it before I send it, and requesting a, um, proclamation from the town for his years of service?
If that's, if that's the process, uh, uh, how our board would communicate with the board, so I'd, then I would very much like to do that. I'd make a motion to do so, Mr. Chairman.
And do I have a second on that motion?
I, I'll second that motion, sure.
All, anybody, uh, excuse me, do I have a motion? Do I have a second? And a motion? All approve?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone not approve? Great, okay, yeah, I agree. I'll definitely set that up. I'll try to knock one out in the next day or two.
Excellent.
I'll get it over to you. Um, I, I think that's a great idea. You know what, I was, you laugh, but I was gonna suggest that we add a plaque to the back of this and give him his name plate.
I, I think that's
Yeah, put that on his desk. And then, you know, the zoning board of appeals behind it.
I think that's a great idea. Yeah, I would, I would very much like to do that and recognize him in such a way, and perhaps we could invite him to, uh, either one of our meetings, or the Board of Selectment. Could be a part of that. We could invite him to a Board of Selectment meeting.
No, I'd absolutely love to.
Mr. Colo, as I'm sure he is privated on his couch watching us.
And we miss you already, and if you are watching us, go find something else to do.
We do indeed, Larry.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
You may, please.
With us signing the comprehensive permit for Perry Place, uh, that's, I think it's officially gonna be, uh, my time on the board, so I just wanted to thank everyone for their hospitality on the board, making me feel welcomed, getting me into this process, and it's been an honor, so.
And to the great having you, too, so thank you very much. I really do appreciate it.
You're here.
You're gonna be a fantastic attorney in your chosen field at some point.
Thank you.
Hopefully you end up presiding over a, uh, as a judge, presiding over a private way matter.
I'll be thinking back on you guys.
But it all started here.
You'll be ahead of the game.
All righty.